I'd like to call to order our August 14th Alexander County Board of Education meeting to order, and I'd like to start out with a moment of silence, please.
Now it's my pleasure to introduce Hannah Leo. Hannah is an 11th grade student at Alexander County Early College. Hannah's the daughter of Josh and Molly Leo of the Bethlehem Community, and she's going to assist us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Hannah.
Thank you.
Board members, you had a chance to look at the agenda. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? And that carries. Thank you. Now is our fun time, our honors and recognitions, and I'll ask Dr. Jennifer Heffner to fill up and present.
Thank you.
I haven't signed up yet. Thank you Chairman Bowman, board members. It's always my pleasure to present the honors and recognition portion of this meeting each month, and tonight we're going to make two recognitions of very deserving staff members. They have received top honors in their fields. I would ask that Board Member Brixie, please come up and help me with the first presentation. First, we're going to start with Mrs. Susan Gant. Susan Gant, Career and Technical Education Director of Alexander County Schools, has recently been named as the Northwest Region CTE Administrator of the Year through the North Carolina Association of Career and Technical Education. Mrs. Gant is one of six regional winners in North Carolina. This honor places her in the running for State CTE Administrator of the Year. The winner will be announced at the Spring Conference in February 2019, and I'm so hoping we can all attend. Since 2012, Mrs. Gant has served as the CTE Director of Alexander County Schools. Prior to this position, she taught agriculture for one year in Kings Mountain, and then six years at Alexander Central High School. She served as an Assistant Principal at West Junior High for two years, and then as the Principal at West Alexander Middle School for 12 years. She has both a bachelor's degree and master's degree from North Carolina State University in Agriculture Education. Mrs. Gant also earned her Principal Certification and Education Specialist Degree from Appalachian State University. Mrs. Gant and her husband Kevin reside in Hickory, and they have three beautiful children, Leighton, Lauren, and Elliot. As of next week, her two oldest children will be attending NC State University, so they are following in Mom and Dad's footsteps. Congratulations, Susan Gant.
You do.
Vice Chairman Harry Schrum, will you help me with the second presentation? We will also recognize Ed Wills, a CHS Men's Varsity Basketball Coach, for his recent award of Coaches vs. Cancer Coach of the Year. Coach Wills was recognized by the North Carolina Basketball Coaches Association as Coach of the Year at their annual meeting in Greensboro in July. The Coaches vs. Cancer Program was developed to support the American Cancer Society in their efforts in fighting cancer. Fans pledge a dollar amount for every three-point shot made by the team during the season. I have a great deal of respect for Ed Wills, both on and off the basketball court. He challenges his students to perform at a high level, just like he challenges his basketball players. He holds himself, his students, and his student athletes to a very high standard, and I appreciate that he understands the importance of both of those roles at Alexander Central High School. Please join me in congratulating the Coaches vs. Cancer Coach of the Year, Coach Ed Wills.
Congratulations to him. Congratulations to him. Okay. It's my honor tonight to recognize a very special person, our superintendent. Our superintendent, Dr. Jennifer Heffner, has been recognized as the Northwest North Carolina Superintendent of the Year. The superintendent's council, more than a dozen superintendents across the nation, across the state in this region. She was one of eight superintendents in the state recognized for this honor. Each region of the state selects a Superintendent of the Year. This honor places her in the running for State Superintendent of the Year. Dr. Heffner has served as Superintendent of Alexander County Schools since August of 2014. She serves as Acting Superintendent and later interim superintendent. Dr. Heffner was an Associate Superintendent from July 2012 to May 2014. She served as interim Associate Superintendent from March 2012 to July 2012. She was at the central office as the Director of Elementary Curriculum Title I, and has led our Common Core and Essential Standards. She was selected as a local, regional, and state Administrator of the Year from Educational Office Professionals. She served as principal at Bethlehem Elementary School for nine years, and as Assistant Principal for one year. Dr. Heffner also served as Curriculum Specialist at Bethlehem. She taught math from 1993 to 1998 at Bethlehem, and from 1996 to 1998, part-time Alternative Learning Program at Alexander Central High School. Her career in the school system began as a teacher assistant and a bus driver at Sugarloaf Elementary. Dr. Heffner got her doctorate in Educational Leadership from Appalachian State University. She also holds an Educational Specialist Degree and a Master's in School Administration from Appalachian State University. She was also a graduate of Alexander Central. If selected for the honor of State Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Heffner would serve as a sitting advisor to the North Carolina State Board of Education, in addition to running as a finalist for the National Superintendent of the Year. What an honor. Congratulations, Dr. Heffner. Please congratulate her. You're welcome. Congratulations.
Do you want to join me for a picture?
Yes, we will. It's before you die.
Thank you. You've seen a tiara. Princess was not in any of that. Do you want to join me for a picture?
You got it?
I'm sorry, I missed all this. Well deserved. Congratulations. Well deserved. I don't know what you're doing with your glasses, but if I don't finish my application packet, I won't be in the room. I hope you get to work on that, but I will. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. Is, will somebody check and see if there's any public comment? Okay. Good news. Okay. Board members, you have had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve. That's presented.
Second.
Without a motion, no seconds, or any discussion. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Thank you. That carries. Now it's time for our reports, and we'll start off with the Alexander Early College Update, and Principal Jason Evans.
Last time I did this, I forgot my glasses. I didn't want anybody to think I was in a bad mood.
Now, there's a little joke behind that. He did look like he was in a bad mood, did he not?
Hannah's laughing, and she knows. All right. Well, good evening. I'd like to start off by thanking the members of the board, Dr. Heffner, Dr. Curry, for the opportunity to serve as the Principal of Alexander Early College. It's truly been a pleasure. Also, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to highlight AEC this evening. We have a lot to be proud of, and I'm going to try to go as quickly as possible. This year, we have 65 entering freshmen. Of those 65 freshmen, eight come from non-traditional schools, which are home schools, and actually several different private schools, including Alexander Christian Academy here locally in our county. The eight of the 65 is the highest percentage we've had in any of our three classes, so I'd like to think that we're starting to grow more in popularity in our region. We did attract some private school students that were actually residents of Alexander County, that were going to private schools in Wilkes and some of the other surrounding counties. So that's always great, when we can attract those students back to Alexander County schools. We have an agreement to take 17.5% of the eighth-grade class from East and West Alexander Middle Schools, and that equals approximately 57 freshmen from our traditional schools in the county. The one thing that we all have in common at Alexander Early College is that we all greatly benefit from the early college experience. Each year, we set a goal of 80% first-generation college students, and the definition of a first-generation college student is a student that has, that neither parent has graduated with a bachelor's degree or higher. So if the parents hold an associate's degree, or a high school diploma, or didn't graduate from high school, they're considered a first-generation student. If one looks at the most current census data for Alexander County, we do have slightly higher-than-average poverty rate in our county, so the fact that we can offer a free associate's degree directly challenges our economic status in the state with the hope of lowering that poverty rate is the overall goal. At full capacity, we hope to be at around 300 students strong. Our graduates will have the opportunity to enter the college or university of their choice as an academic junior. Therefore, they will be able to complete their bachelor's degree in just two years, or a master's degree in four years. As noted, early college high schools were created in North Carolina primarily for any student that is traditionally underrepresented in higher education. By addressing these subgroups, we hope to increase the number of residents that possess at least a bachelor's degree or higher. Our location has changed this year. We are located in what is the older of the two buildings on the CVCC Taylorsville campus. It's actually the same building that houses the monthly commissioners' meetings, something that we're proud of. We were able to bring over the JRTC program from Alexander Central High School. Gunny Pratt helped us out this summer with our freshman summer camp, so it's been a great addition. We also share bus transportation. Actually, we run our bus transportation through Alexander Central High School. They manage that part of our school. They do a great job with that. They've been great to work with. Our current enrollment this year is 197 students. Our estimated enrollment for the 18-19 school year back in 2016 was 200, so we're right there, where we wanted to be. And as I said earlier, our projected enrollment is 300 students strong eventually. Our current staff members, many of you know them, they have not changed. They are the original AEC staff, and we're lucky to still have them. They all do a phenomenal job. Mary Beth Bumgarner and Ashley Bumgarner teach English at AEC. Tony Warren, Shelley Kane, and Melissa Sharp are our three math teachers. Deanne Robbins teaches social studies. Holly Winters teaches science. Kristy Hall, science. Many of you know Michelle Rashford. She is our school counselor. And Crystal Sherrill is our bookkeeper, data manager, and secretary. So something that I'm proud of, and I would like to, I hope that this continues, we have 100% staff retention. We have not lost any staff members from year one, so we're going into our third year, and that makes things easier. So as I mentioned before, we're at 64 students. It's actually 65 students with our incoming freshman class. Our sophomore class is at 82 students, and our legacy class, our junior class, is at 51 students. Total enrollment of 197 students. Total of the 197 students, 12 are non-traditional. That means 12 home-school, private-school, charter-school students that have come back to Alexander County Schools, and that we hope that that number grows. We fully participate in athletics, AEC clubs. So the clubs that we currently have at Alexander Early College are the Beta Club, Student Council Drama Club, Art Club, Future Teachers of America, Pride Club, Faith Club, Tark Club. This club actually come from East Alexander Middle School, and we were able to gain some of those other students from West and non-traditional schools to kind of merge with them. When they were at East, they competed nationally in Washington DC, or national, they were nationally recognized, so we're proud to have that club. Our yearbook, we run as a club, Safe Haven Club, Mathletes, Interact Club, and Band. And all of our clubs are student-led with a staff sponsor. We will host the Second Annual Student Club Fair on August 22nd, so that list will change. As we grow in students, our clubs will grow as well. AEC athletic participation, we are Owls, but we were also Cougars. Many of our students compete, and they are a part of Alexander Central High School. The athletic program over there is second to none, so I'm thrilled that we can continue this tradition. In Alexander County, it's a tradition of excellence up here. When you start looking at the different teams and the coaches, and just the high quality that it is. These numbers have changed. I learned today that we had two more make the volleyball team, so we're at four students on the AC volleyball team. Tennis, those four students actually participate in girls tennis. Football, we've increased by three, so we're at four students playing football. Soccer, we're at seven and counting, and very proud. Two of our students are captains on varsity team this year, so we definitely need to get out there and support our student athletes. Basketball, we're at one, we actually have one more cheerleader that I learned about today, so two cheerleaders. Softball, we're at two students. Golf, one, swimming, two, wrestling, three, and track seems to be a popular sport with AEC students. We're at seven. Facility update, as I mentioned before, we are in the Alexander Center for the 2018-2019 school year. The way this will work, we occupy all of the rooms in the Alexander Center except for one. One classroom has been reserved for the adult nursing class. From 7:00 to 5:00, we are the only show in town. We're the only ones in the building, so it feels more like a school than kind of what I'm used to. I'm able to walk up and down the hallways, and we're able to do things more as a school this year, and that's been a great change. Our juniors and our sophomores that take CVCC courses will do so in the newer building. We call it the Building on the Hill, which is the Applied Technologies Building. They will take their courses through CVCC, and CVCC instructors in the applied building, while our high school side will be housed in the older building, the Alexander Center. A few things I want to celebrate. Actually, for the 2016-17 school year, we did, we were recognized for making growth by the state of North Carolina. AEC scored a 100% approval rating on a record 69 times on the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey. That's something that I'm very proud of. We had 100% parent involvement last year with three student-led conferences, so we've upped it this year to four student-led conferences. Student-led conferences are a great thing. Our students kind of compile their work, keep a data sheet. We invite our parents onto our campus, and our students lead the conference themselves. Teachers are there basically to answer questions. We have an 85% to 90% pass rate on the NC DAP. That is a college placement exam that all college students in the state of North Carolina take. Many 18- and 19-year-olds that enter college for the first time struggle to pass this exam, and 85, I think it was about 87% of our student body passed the reading and writing NC DAP exam, and about 85% passed the mathematics NC DAP exam. Most early colleges across the state are in the low 80s, so about 80% to 81%, so we're slightly higher. Our staff models proper behavior by participating in charities that we believe in, and one of the things that we really believe in at Alexander Early College is the United Way. So we were recognized by the United, local United Way chapter last year for 100% staff participation. Our Beta Club was recognized as a school of merit. We compete every year, so the first two years, we competed in the Jeanette Staley Math Competition. That is at CVCC, and it is all the regional high schools, early colleges included. In both the years that we have competed, we have had a first-place finisher. Our math department is solid. We have a student, several students that have started their own business, and they're actually out there making product and selling product. The one business that has actually been very successful is RC Lures, and they have molds, and they make their own baits, and they know all about it, and they can tell you what you need for this river, and wherever you're going to be fishing in the state, and they make a lot of money, I've been told. So we're proud of them. And last year, we had the winner of the Appalachian Art Contest. Each county was asked to submit different pieces of artwork, and one winner would be picked, and the winner happened to come from AEC, and that was Brianna Friday, and her piece of art was in, you could find it in the education building at Appalachian State University with all the other regional or state winners. So once again, I tried to go quickly, but I did have some things that I wanted to give a shout-out to. So that, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you again for everything that you do for us every day. It is appreciated.
Mr. Evans, when does your clubs meet?
At different times. We have a study hall enrichment time built into our daily schedule. Some of them elect to meet during that time, as long as they're in good or positive academic standing. A few of them meet after school, and of course, if they have the option to meet before school, but most of them choose to not do that. Still waking up. There you go.
Notice band listed as a club. Is that?
Yes. The grading, the reason for that is they do not receive the same grade as a band student at Alexander Central would receive. They get a pass fail, so it's a club slash class. We hope to work on that moving forward, you know, with the proximity of possibly having the new facility and things like that. We hope to be able to have better access to some of the things like band at Alexander Central High School, maybe even chorus. I'd throw that out there.
Great job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Ms. Macy Jones will give us an update on Head Start.
Good evening. Chairman Bowman, Dr. Heffner, members of the board. I'm waiting for your folder to make it down, Sally, you know, you've seen this before.
Oh, yes.
I'm here tonight just to give a quick update on our progress and on our response to the regional office concerning the area of noncompliance that was noted during our federal review in March. You will need the papers that are in the blue paper clip. Over the past couple of weeks, I have been in contact with our program specialist in Atlanta. She and I have talked several times about how to address the area of noncompliance regarding our non-federal share for 2016-2017. Part of the process of addressing the area of noncompliance is to do some type of systemic training. That means that whatever training I provide for the staff, I need to do the same for the policy council, and I need to do the same for the board. So Deborah attached several PDF files, and then I've given you hard copies of those PDF files. And then Kim Bishop was so wonderful to help me get the links activated, so that whenever you go in to view videos, all you should have to do is hover over the link, and you should be able to access videos that I will need for you to watch by the end of September. And so that will address that strategy that I've listed on our plan. The other thing is that I do have a conference call with our program specialist this coming Monday at 1:30, and I'm working with the Training and Technical Assistance Network as well for Head Start to address the area of noncompliance. Again, Sally, you've seen most of this before, and later on, when I come before you, I will talk to you about the plan of action, and that information is located in the stack that has the yellow paper clip on it, so you will have that available to you. And I will give a final report at the October meeting, on where we stand on how we're moving forward. Are there any questions for me?
Do you have any idea about how long the training is?
Those videos, I think the first one is 16 slides, and so it may take about 15 minutes per.
Okay. I just didn't know we needed to plan a day for it.
No, they're not that long. They're very user-friendly, and then, like I said, I printed the scripts for you, so that you can follow along with it. It's not that long at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next will be our superintendent's report, Dr. Jennifer Heffner.
And you, board members, you do have this attachment in your agenda. I have 10 things that I wanted to just report on tonight. I would like to...
Again, Sally, you've seen most of this before. And later on, when I come before you, I will talk to you about the plan of action. And that information is located in the stack that has the yellow paper clip on it. So, you will have that available to you. And I will give a final report at the October meeting on Vermont Stand on how we're moving forward. Are there any questions for me?
Do you have any idea about how long the training is?
Those videos, I think the first one is sixteen slides. And so, it may take about fifteen minutes per.
Okay. I just didn't know if we needed to plan a day for it.
No, they're not that long. They're very user-friendly. And then, like I said, I printed the scripts for you so that you can follow along with it. It's not that long at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Macy. Okay, next will be our superintendent's report, Dr. Jennifer Heffner.
And you, board members, you do have this attachment in your agenda. I have ten things that I wanted to just report on tonight. I would like to schedule a day to visit both the Student Success Center and Alexander Early College. I'm going to work with Kathy Cottle to determine the best way to coordinate lunch. And then, I'm going to send you some possible dates for this combined visit after all students return on August twenty-seventh. I'm happy to report that the new teacher orientation has been a success this week. Chairman Scott Bowman offered the group a warm welcome as they kicked off the day yesterday. And I want to thank Dr. Betsy Curry for the role she has played to ensure these new hires get off on the right foot in our school system. So, thank you, Dr. Curry. Opening session for all school system employees is scheduled for next Tuesday. That's August twenty-first, beginning at eight-thirty in the auditorium. If you cannot attend, please let me know as soon as possible. I'm currently working on the presentation. And as always, I want to recognize each of you at that very special event. Susan Gant updated me that the career exploration labs are being installed this week at both middle schools. She talked to you about those labs when she presented her CTE plan for the upcoming year. Each lab consists of ten modules that relate to the program areas available at the high school. And hopefully, these modules, along with the interest inventories and other career exploration activities, will help students select high school courses that will lead to a successful career for each of them. I have passed some athletic passes to you. Assistant Athletic Director Nathan Robinson has provided your pass for the two thousand eighteen nineteen conference for the Northwestern Athletic Conference. And I would encourage you to enjoy these passes and mark your calendar for the first home football game scheduled for Friday, August twenty-fourth. We're going to be playing Wilkes Central that night and the game begins at seven-thirty. Susan Gant and I also had the pleasure of attending the graduation and signing event last Thursday evening for apprenticeship cataba. Dustin Jones, he is actually a former AC graduate, was the valedictorian for the graduating class. And Jared Buchanan and Sam Watson both signed on as apprentices and they will graduate in two thousand twenty-two. The event was impressive and I'm very grateful to be part of such a partnership that provides a free education and a paycheck all at the same time. The Leadership Retreat held at Appalachian State University on August first and second was a huge success. All school and central office leaders attended the retreat to learn more about legislative and legal updates and school safety. The group also started work on our new strategic plan. And we had some powerful conversations and set some professional goals based on the book entitled, Walking the Talk Together: Sharing the Responsibility for Bringing Values to Life. These discussions were powerful as we decided values have everything to do with our jobs and we can make a difference in the school system and Alexander County. Some of the talking points of that book study or end discussion will be part of the opening session presentation next week. I don't think that we will include Janelle Lingle dancing to Brick House.
Why not?
But we, we might have a sneak preview of that dance. Who knows? Do what? Do what?
So, that's my walk-up song.
Oh, God. The ACHS Athletic Booster Club held its first meeting last night. This group is operating under the leadership of Jeremy Fortner as president, along with other board members. I feel good about the structures in place to ensure strong leadership, fiscal management, and a committed focus on serving all student athletes at Alexander Central High School. I'm happy to report that our school system was recently awarded a grant for a school resource officer. I met with Sheriff Bowman yesterday to discuss this position. The officer will serve Head Night and Stony Point Elementary Schools. And I'm hopeful this is the beginning of a state initiative to provide a resource officer for every school in the state. Lastly, I want to thank everyone for their hard work this summer. It takes a lot of people working behind the scenes to get ready for a new school year. We've done a lot of hiring, planning, cleaning, and all those kinds of things to get ready for the first day of school for students. August twenty-seventh is quickly approaching. And I just want to thank every department and employee for the role they have played in getting a new school year started. So, thank you, everyone. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to new business and I'll ask Kathy Cottle, our school nutrition director, to come forward and present.
Chairman Bowman, board members, Dr. Heffner. You received a copy of the memo about our bid. We did have a bid opening here for our pizza products. And the company that has had our pizza products in the past, Smart Mouth Pizza, Bullseye Brand, received the bid, got the, had the bid. So, we recommend that you approve that for this school year with an extension of up to four years, hopefully.
Board members, you've heard this request. What's the pleasure?
Move to approve.
One second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, that should end my bids for this year, finally. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up will be Mr. John McCurdy, our transportation director. And he'll be discussing our charter bus.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for our eighteen nineteen charter bus companies for this year. We have twelve companies listed. I don't know if you have a copy of those.
It's on their agenda.
They have already been inspected by Mr. Greg Smith. He's our consultant. He checks all the paperwork to make sure it's right, plus inspects the buses. So, pretty much everything's the same as it was last year. Just ask for your approval.
Board members, you've heard this consideration. What's the pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Any no's? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Macy Jones, you're up again to discuss our plan of action for our non-compliance.
Yes, earlier I referenced the group of papers that are in a yellow paper clip. And I tried to make it easy, easy for you to identify what I'd be talking about. You're welcome. In one of my conversations with Nicole Mason from the regional office, she said that they had attended a meeting and their regional program manager suggested that they reach out to every program that had a non-compliance or deficiency and suggest to them that they ask for an extension. I had not planned to ask for an extension to address the area of non-compliance because we had been working on our plan of action. Once they reviewed my plan of action, they realized that some of the dates that I have down to train staff and to talk with the board and talk to the policy council occur after our original due date of September the seventh. So, I did ask for the extension. The letter that is on top of your packet shows that the extension was approved. We have until October the thirty-first to turn in our plan of action. The second part of your packet has the plan of action. And it looks like this. And you have a hard copy there. And you'll see that it has our grant number, the area of non-compliance. But the most important parts are the, is the column that says action steps and then the responsible person and the timeline. So, you will see that the first action step is that I'm addressing you tonight for the second time. Then the second action step would be to train the policy council at our August eighth meeting. And Sally was at that meeting and they received the links for the videos. And they are, they're going to watch the videos and be able to ask questions as well. On page two, you will see that in August, September, and in October, I will do the same with the employees at our orientation. And we will go over our volunteer services forms and how to complete those accurately. And you will see action steps four and five also have things that we will work with, with our area of enrollment. We will blend our classes this year, meaning that we will have Head Start children attending some of the NC pre-K classes. So, we will blend our classrooms this year. The data manager, Patricia Burke, has already consulted with Child Plus. That's our child tracking system. And we have set up user-defined fields where we will track all of our non-federal share. And she is working to come up with some more user-defined fields that are just specific for how we will track our in-kind and our donations. And then finally, number seven, we will use the Child Plus system to monitor in-kind and the non-federal share. And we will provide a report at our policy council meetings every month, as well as a report to the board. If you see that I have missed something, please feel free to share and let me know if there's something that I need to add. And definitely, I'll be glad to do it. The other thing is we've revised our program policies and procedures to reflect these changes. And I just need approval to submit this action plan unless you have something that you want me to add to it. And I did show this to Ms. Mahaffey as well and asked her if she had any suggestions. And she said, looked pretty detailed to her. So, but I'm willing to make any changes that you see necessary.
Board members, what's the pleasure?
Move to approve.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? And that carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, discussion on the Sugarloaf Fire Department lease extension. And I'll ask Vice Chair Harry Schrum to discuss that with us.
Yes, as you know, the lease is expiring. And the facilities committee's recommendation is that we extend another six months at the current rate. I believe it's at five hundred right now. And I will say that there's some work taking place now. The rough-in plumbing is being done now. The rough-in electrical, the brick was delivered a couple of days ago. So, starting to see a resurgence of work there again. So, I feel pretty good about this go-around. Anyhow, we're recommending another six-month lease extension at five hundred.
Do they, do they anticipate it being finished at that time?
They're afraid to say.
I think part of the problem is that the contractor has an open-ended contract. There's not a completion date that they were held to. So, I think that when it comes down to it, that's a whole lot of it. And so, that's the reason that can't say. But I know there's a lot of pressure on the contractor at this point.
Do we need to take action on this?
Yes, and of course, as you know, then the lease will go to the fire department for their approval. So, I don't anticipate any issues there.
Board members, you've heard this recommendation. What's the pleasure?
Move to approve.
Sure, second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
I would hope that at some point in the fall, the fire department would give us an update on what their status is. Because this is like the fourth time we've extended this. And I personally am not necessarily inclined to keep extending it ad infinitum. I think it's the, I appreciate the fire department, of course, and what they do for our community. But I don't know that we're getting fair value for what we're leasing to them.
I agree with that.
So, I will support the extension, but I'm going to be hard-pressed to support it at that rate.
Again.
A fifth time.
I understand that completely.
Thank you.
And I'm at the same spot.
I think we all are. Okay, board members, any more discussion? All in favor of extending this lease six more months at the current rate? Please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Okay, thank you, Harry. Next up is Ms. Sherri McCaffey and she will have several policies to look at. We got off last month and now it's paid up.
That's right. Came back with the vengeance.
Yeah.
We have ten policies up for first reading tonight, policies in the seven thousand series. I will ask for input from the principals and other staff and bring them back to you for the second reading next month.
Thank you. Okay, next up, the Education Foundation. Ms. Bridget Ryan is president of that. Bridget.
Board members, as you know, we've scheduled that for November the nineteenth at six o'clock. We met, the foundation met last week, I guess it was, and had some discussion about changing the format. We are going to change that to a reception and a ceremony. We're hoping that that would, actually it is a fundraiser. So, we're hoping to make more money. We don't have all the details down, but with Deborah's help, we're going to get that down. And just wanted to ask you, in the past, the board has supported that in a sponsorship, at a sponsorship level as in the past. And if you're willing to do the same five thousand dollar sponsorship this year.
Board members, you've heard this request. What's the pleasure, the board?
I move to continue our sponsorship at the same level.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Any no's? And thank you. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're entering into closed session. The board will enter to discuss personnel, our North Carolina General Statute one four-three dash three one eight. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Time out.
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Any no's? Thank you so much. Thank you.